Just, oops, if there's anyone who wishes to address the board at this time with regard to public input for the budget, please feel free to come forward to the podium and just press the red button so that the light is lit and we can indicate that the mic is on so that we can hear you. I'm not lit yet. I think he's hooking us all up now. And if you would, when you give comments publicly, if you would, just give us your name before you start speaking so that we know with whom, thank you, to whom we're addressing. Just give us your name and feel free to share your input.
Thank you. My name is Gus Philpott. This is a small item in a multimillion dollar budget, but I request that you eliminate the unnecessary expense associated with hiring three sheriff's deputies to be present at all the school board meetings. Our schools get one SRO for the entire school, yet this board apparently feels it should have three deputies at every meeting in addition to the Richmond two security staff. I estimate the expense is somewhere between $800 and $1,500 per meeting, and I request that you eliminate this expense from the 2019-2020 budget. Thank you.
If there's anyone else who wishes to address the podium, please feel free to do so. We just ask that you share your name with us so that we can know with whom we're speaking. And we will have this time open until 5:30. public input with regard to the budget, so feel free to approach the podium and share any concerns you may have with regard to the budget until 5:30. Thanks. I'm not sure if anyone else has walked in, but just a reminder that from this period until 5:30, we will be taking public input as it pertains to the budget. So please feel free to address the podium and make your comments or concerns made publicly. Just ask that you share your name if you have any questions, concerns, or comments as it pertains to the budget. Thanks for your patience. I'm not sure if anyone else has walked in, but just a reminder that from this period until 5:30, we will be taking public input as it pertains to the budget. So please feel free to address the podium and make your comments or concerns made publicly. Just ask that you share your name if you have any questions, concerns, or comments as it pertains to the budget. Thanks for your patience. Just a reminder, we've got about three more minutes for which we are receiving public input with regard to the budget, so if you have any questions, concerns, or comments as it pertains to the budget, please feel free to address the podium to speak. The microphone appears to already be on. Just give us your name before you start speaking. Thanks. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We have just about to enter into our May 20, 2019 special call board meeting from 5:00 until 5:30. We had an opportunity for the public to speak, to have questions, concerns, or input with regard to the budget. That time period has dispensed, and we will move into our regularly scheduled special call board meeting. At this time, we have arrived at item 2.1, approval of our agenda. Would be happy to entertain a motion at this time.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Manning.
I made the motion to approve the 2019, oh, sorry, wrong item, agenda. I make a motion to approve the agenda of the May 20 special call board meeting. It is presented by administration.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Shad. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We have just about to enter into our May 20, 2019 special call board meeting from 5:00 until 5:30. We had an opportunity for the public to speak, to have questions, concerns, or input with regard to the budget. That time period has dispensed, and we will move into our regularly scheduled special call board meeting. At this time, we have arrived at item 2.1, approval of our agenda. Would be happy to entertain a motion at this time.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Manning.
I made the motion to approve the 2019 -- oh, sorry, wrong item, agenda. I make a motion to approve the agenda of the May 20 special call board meeting. It is presented by administration.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Shadd. It's been moved and properly seconded that we approve the agenda of the May 20, 2019 special call board meeting. Is there any discussion with regard to the same? Hearing none, we'll call the question at this time. Okay. Ms. Agostini, do you want to indicate your affirmative? Okay. Since we have one person that's on the computer, I want to do a hand vote, just for the sake of the public. All those in favor of approving tonight's agenda of the special call board meeting, just please indicate by raising your right hand. By a vote of seven to zero, the vote unanimously carries. And that moves us right into item three, old business action requested, specifically item 3.1, the 2019-20 budget. Dr. Davis.
Good afternoon, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. We have before you this afternoon Dr. Harry Miley to present to you for second reading and for approval of the general fund budget for 2019-2020. Dr. Miley.
Thank you. The budget you have in front of you essentially, except for about $30,000 difference because we had updated data from the State Department in terms of our weighted people units, went up about $37,000, and we had available, we had needed a 1.0 FTE for the ESOL at, excuse me, I apologize, for the newcomer program at R2I2. We had a half of an FTE in last week's. They needed a full FTE, we just didn't have enough money, and so we increased that to a full FTE at R2I2 for the ESOL program to, for compliance. Thank you. Thank you. Those big words get me. And other than that, the budget is the same. You had asked us to elaborate on the different millage rate proposals that you had suggested. The administration, if you remember, brought to you a proposal for millage rate cap, as indicated in our first proposal. You have data and you have a table in front of you that has three different levels. The first level would be the blue line, which would be a zero millage increase. The zero millage increase, as you see, would allow us to meet some of the state mandates, all the state mandates, excuse me, but not give our other employees any pay raises. The next level of funding that you suggested was about, was half the cap, which is 6.3. That's the green line. Anything below the green line would not be funded. If you limited it to 6.3 mils, it would, everything below the green line to the end would require the millage rate cap. I'll be glad to answer any other questions. The data, the other, the line items have not changed since last week, except the half of, additional half FTE for the ESOL teacher to meet compliance issues. With that, I'll be glad to entertain any questions.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Manning.
I'd like a motion that we approve the Richland District 2 general fund operating budget for fiscal year 2019-20 in the amount of $301,214,621, as presented to the board this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Mr. Shadd. It's been moved and properly seconded that we approve the budget for fiscal year 2019-2020 as presented by administration. Is there any discussion at this time?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Agostini.
I just want to thank, thank Dr. Miley very much for breaking this down. So we, it's, there's a clear picture of if we took zero mil, that we would just be covering the state mandated costs. So I really appreciate you breaking this down for us to get a better perspective of where we would be on different levels.
Thank you. As you always know, my capable staff did all the work, so that's who we need to thank.
Thank you, Shelley.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Thanks.
Does that complete your question?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the board? Dr. Elkins Johnson.
Can you tell me what millage would this be? Is this the cap?
Yes, ma'am. 12.6 mils would be the increase in the cap.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Elkins Johnson. Questions or concerns from the board? Hearing none, thank you, Dr. Miley. We appreciate your hard work, you and your staff, and for taking our questions and concerns and those of the public into consideration. We do appreciate that. Thank you.
Happy. Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. I'm sorry. Thank you. At this time, there's a motion on the floor. Discussion has been dispensed with that period, and now we'll call the question. Does everyone have a prompt? Are you up now, Mrs. Agostini?
I am.
Okay. If you could indicate by casting your vote at this time. Is it going to appear on that screen? Or the results of the vote? Can you give us the, since it's not coming up, can you give us, and we can't see, can you give us the results? It's, okay, thank you so much. By, this is okay, by a vote of seven to zero, the vote, the motion unanimously carries. Thank you so much for your assistance. Moving right along in our agenda, we've arrived at item 3.2, the approval of policy revision GCB, professional staff contracts and compensation. That is a new item. Dr. Davis.
Madam Chair, members of the board, we're bringing back before you this evening the following policies for your approval. We shared these policies with you at our last call board meeting. Those policies will be GCB, professional staff contract, contracts and compensation, GBEE, internet and electronic communications, GBEF, cell phones, cellular phones and other personal electronic communication devices, GBGB, staff, personal security and safety, and GCFB, hiring of administrative staff. The following policies are not being submitted for approval as they require further review. Those policies are GCR, the non-school employment of professional staff, which is being reviewed by our FAC, and GBEEA, social media, which is also new and is being reviewed by legal counsel.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Manning.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the revisions of policy GCB, professional staff contracts and compensation, policy GBEE, internet and electronic communication, policy revision, and I am skipping one on purpose, policy revision GBGB, staff, personal security and safety, and policy revision GCFB, hiring of administrative staff, is recommended by the district.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second by Mr. Shadd. It's been motioned and properly seconded. Is there any discussion regarding any of those policies? I'll have a question, but it's not about those.
Yes, I have a question.
Dr. Elkins Johnson.
Policy GCB. And look at there, it is on the board. You guys are awesome. Standing ovation. Thumbs up, team. Thank you so much. If you stroll up and it says, upon recommendation of the superintendent, the board would notify teachers in writing, we don't do that. The board does not notify teachers. So should that be the superintendent or HR? Or if you can clarify for me, because?
Maybe the district.
The district, because as a board, we've never notified any teachers.
Thank you, Dr. Elkins Johnson.
So, Mr. Manning, I would love for you to go back and?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make the, I'd like to accept the friendly amendment that that say the district is part of my motion, please.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Is there an additional discussion? Dr. Elkins Johnson. Mrs. Agostini.
Madam Chair, for policy GBGB, I have a concern. I brought it up last week, and to me, again, it does look like it's sequential, while I was told it was not. I can't imagine doing one step without doing the one preceding it. But, well, I guess my first question is, is the SRO considered an employee of the district, or are they considered local law enforcement agency?
They're a local law enforcement agency.
Thank you.
Contracted services by the, by the school district.
Okay. Because when we're talking about if an employee is subject to an assault, harassment, damage, or personal property, it goes on and on, the employee's supposed to notify the supervisor first. I'm concerned that it's the, and then the supervisor is to notify the superintendent, who then will determine whether they should, in the second bullet, second bullet point, the superintendent or his or her designated will report the incident to the designated local law enforcement agency. I'm wondering, I would like to see it be the supervisor or the principal at the school. I can't imagine going through one more step if there's been an assault or an immediate need for local law enforcement, especially when we've got SROs at our schools.
Give me, can you give me your recommendation again, Mrs. Agostini, so I understand it clearly?
Well, the recommendation would be for the first, or for the second bullet point, the teacher employee should immediately notify his or her employer supervisor. The principal slash supervisor will contact local law enforcement if necessary and report the incident to the superintendent. That might combine both, the first and the second bullet point.
Thank you, Mrs. Agostini. Mr. Manning.
Madam Chair, I think the way that I read it, where it says the superintendent or his or her designated, so the superintendent could create a system where issues that arise to certain levels could be reported by the principal or supervisor, under the current policy, if I'm to read that correctly. Dr. Davis, do you agree with that?
That's my interpretation as well, but, Dr. Davis?
Yes.
That's my interpretation as well, but, Dr. Davis, maybe was I talking to you?
So I'll leave my motion as originally stated with the first friendly amendment.
So the principal is okay, or the supervisor is okay to notify law enforcement? It doesn't have to come under the direction of somebody at the district office?
Absolutely not. Principals notify law enforcement all the time in case of emergencies and situations. Rarely is law enforcement ever noted, law enforcement notified by the district office and principals at the discretion to call law enforcement to their campus should they be in need. There's no, no, no step process that they have to go through. Once they have called law enforcement and/or EMS, they're to notify us to let us know that has been called, and then we subsequently will send you out as a board of confidential update about what has transpired at that school and why EMS or law enforcement or the fire department may have been called. But they do not need our permission to do that.
All right. Thank you for clarifying.
Thank you, Ms. Agostini. Do you have additional questions or concerns regarding that policy? Okay. Thank you. Additional questions or concerns regarding the motion on the floor? It's been moved and properly seconded that we approve policies GCB, professional staff contracts and compensation, policy GBEE, internet and electronic communication, policy revisions to GBGB, staff, personal security and safety, as well as policy GCFB, hiring of administrative staff. Have I correct, have I indicated that correctly? Mr. Manning, with the exception of the friendly amendment?
With the, right, with the friendly amendment to the district.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Manning. If there's no further discussion, we will call for the question at this time and cast our votes. It was Mr. Shadd. Thank you. And since we can't see it on screen, Mr. Manning, well, for that, can you, can you review it, Mr., yeah, can you review it on your personal screen, Mr. Manning, to ensure that the motion is as you've indicated?
Yeah, we need to, it does not talk about the change of that line to the district and, in the policy that Dr. Elkins Johnson recommended, which was GCB, is that correct?
If I may, Dr. Davis?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Madam Chair. The Teacher Dismissal Act says that the board will actually, in writing, it says, upon recommendation of the superintendent, the board would notify the teachers in writing of their employment status before May the 1st. So that is partly why that's written in there. So it may need, we may need to make a recommendation that the board will notify, the board would notify the teachers, allowing the district to notify the teachers, something to that nature. Because the district, the district will notify, but the board has to share the information per the Teacher Dismissal Act.
I've got you. Yep, Dr. Caution Parker. I've got one just a second.
I need that as loud as I can. Sorry to confuse you. I'm sorry to confuse you, but we just want to make sure we follow.
Isn't it, isn't it in that, in that policy, with the contracts that are, that are submitted or given to employees, they're, it's stated on there that it's coming from the board of trustees, right?
Yes.
So when we vote to approve or disapprove the ratification of personnel, then automatically we are saying that, yes, John Doe's going to get a contract, Susie Q is not. We're automatically saying that. Am I correct?
That is correct. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So board in that case isn't the board actually doing it, it's the board is a pejorative term that is essentially coming from us, but y'all are doing the administrative work.
Yes, sir. That is correct.
Thank you, Ms. Williams, for that clarification.
Okay. Is my lawyer down on the other end okay with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Then I would like to?
Wait, wait, wait. We're still clarifying some information. So we're saying the teacher contract, is that what we're referencing when we say it will be placed in writing on a teacher contract? Or is this for dismissal? Now I'm confused.
It says in paragraph, on the first page, under contracts, it says, upon recommendation of the superintendent.
Right.
The board would notify teachers in writing of their employment status before May 1st for the following school year.
So actually, that's a teacher contract?
Yes, ma'am. That is correct.
Okay. Okay. That makes sense now. Okay. The language was confusing.
Okay. So, Dr. Elkins Johnson, I'm going to remove the friendly amendment then, so we're just going to have it as stated in our motion?
Right.
On the tablet. Is everybody okay with that?
I'm fine with that. Is everyone okay?
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. So at this time, we'll cast our votes. So thank you for the clarification, Ms. Williams. Does everyone have the prompt on their screen? So then the prompt on the screen is accurate. Yes, sir. Yes, my vote, mine came up. Is it the one? It's unanimous? Everyone's okay? By a vote of seven to zero, the motion unanimously carries. Is there a motion with regard to the approval of policy revision GBEF, cellular phones and other personal electronic communication devices? And if we could pull that up, I guess before we? This is the same as, um?
Madam Chair.
Dr. Davis, I'm sorry. Yes.
I was going to say, I'd like to make a motion, but amend the policy in my motion, that we approve the policy revision with the striking of the term in the fourth sentence. It says, or supervision of students. So instead of that, it should say, we are engaged in instruction or in any other manner that may interfere, and also remove the receiving of text messages or instant messages. If we can remove the receiving part?
Absolutely.
I don't think we can police anybody receiving something as what they do in return.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Is there a second with regard to your motion? Dr. Caution Parker, it's been moved and properly seconded that we approve the motion with, one, two, three, four, fifth line, the striking of supervision, and the striking on the fifth, on the last line of the first paragraph, we're striking, actually, or receiving, because you can't control what you receive. There's a motion on the floor. Has it been seconded? Dr. Caution, thank you. It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? And before you?
No. I'm good.
You're good? Is there any discussion with regard to some? I know that, I know that I've issued my concerns and questions beforehand, that reflects some of my concerns. I appreciate that. Is there any further discussion with regard to the motion as stated that's on the floor?
Just as a point of clarification?
Dr. Davis.
We are keeping in this section, or in any other manner that may interfere with essential functions, Mr. Manning.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. All right. So supervision is redundant.
Well, I felt like, the reason I wanted to say supervision is because I may be, let's say I'm a coach supervising students. I mean, there may be an appropriate time for me to send a text message dealing with an issue that's not interfering with my duties or responsibilities. And so I felt like if it's an issue that arises to interference, that's an issue, just supervision, I felt like was restrictive.
Ten vote. Thank you, sir, for the clarification.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Dr. Davis, Dr. Holmes.
I would just like to say, I'm glad that we revised this policy in a time that we were talking about teaching. In a time that we're talking about teaching, treating teachers as professional, I think that it's important that we treat our teachers as professionals that they are, and I'm glad to see the revision in this policy.
Thank you, Dr. Holmes. Additional questions, comments, or concerns with regard to this policy? If none, we will call the question at this time. Mr. Manning, if you would, just review the motion on your screen to ensure that it's -- have you ready to cast your vote? It just says, it just --
Yes, ma'am. It is correct.
It is correct. Okay. At this time, we'll cast our votes. Thank you, Mr. Manning. Okay. By a vote of seven to zero, the motion unanimously carries. And I appreciate, I was well respecting our teachers and not overpolicing what they do. They have a lot to do and a lot to juggle during the day, so I appreciate that as well. Moving on to --
Madam Chair.
Dr. Davis.
Dr. below, belabor the hour.
Yes.
Because we've been very efficient in this manner. But just as a report to the board, per your request, taking these policies to FAC was very productive. Great participation from FAC participants and much of the language that you see, some of it was shared prior to FAC, but they were very vocal in sharing their approval or if they had some heartburns of concerns. And there was some additional language that was added as a result also of recommendations. So just as a report back to the board, as we are looking to adopt, we would adopt the policy where we would take things to the FAC that impacts teachers. So faculty advisory council, FAC, sorry.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Thank you, Dr. Davis. At this time, we've arrived at item 4.1, for adjournment.
Madam Chair, move adjournment.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Manning.
District, I would just like to say thank you for having it on the screen. So thank you. Really appreciate that.
Having no questions or comments or discussion, we will stand adjourned.